For Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, the first order of business is the approval of the April 10th, 2024 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
The move we approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. The next order of business is the following new business where we will hear the petition of Kerr Holdings LLC to rezone approximately 358,000ths of an acre located at 1101 Fifth Street from B4 Urban Commercial District to B5 General Business District to allow the use of an existing structure as an auto body shop.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of Planning Commission. As stated, the subject property is located at 1101 Fifth Street. The structure was built in 1949 and was previously used as an auto repair and body shop. The property is situated at the intersection of Fifth, Monroe, and Park. This is a prominent and highly visible corner along the corridor. I mention this because corners anchor the block and can really define the urban design of an area. Corners and intersections have a huge impact on the overall look and feel of a place. The purpose of the petition is to rezone the property from B4 Urban Commercial District to B5 General Business District to allow the property to be used as an auto body shop again. These are current photos of the site. The properties are recommended for neighborhood commercial uses on our future land use map. These areas are intended to consist primarily of office, retail, personal service, and restaurant-type uses that are in scale and designed to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and to serve it as well. Patrons can walk, bike, or take a short drive to reach their everyday goods and services. The properties are also included in the area covered by our Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan, which was adopted by City Council on May 23rd, 2006. The purpose of the plan is to provide a vision and a blueprint for the revitalization of the Fifth Street Corridor between Main Street and the Martin Luther King Bridge. Fifth Street links downtown and the riverfront with the midtown area of the city as well, both of which are important areas for revitalization. The properties were rezoned to B6 Riverfront Downtown, which is now called B4 Urban Commercial District, on December 11th, 2007. The rezoning of the Fifth Street Corridor was done following the adoption of the master plan and under its recommendations. The master plan provides a vision of a revitalized Fifth Street Corridor that is both walkable and meets the needs of its surrounding neighborhood. I've included some key sections of that plan here that highlight why B5 and the expansion of automotive uses is not appropriate for the area. Specifically, the B5 district is our least restrictive and most intense commercial district, and that the abundance of automotive uses that previously dominated this corridor had contributed to its decline and should not be expanded. The uses that did not conform with the plan and the B4 Urban Commercial District were allowed to remain as nonconforming, or sometimes people refer to these as grandfathered uses. However, that was with the understanding that they would eventually be redeveloped to those consistent with the plan and the desires of the neighborhoods. This property has had nonconforming status for the use of the building as a car wash, but since more than two years have elapsed since auto body work was done here, that nonconforming status is no longer valid. In summary, with the adoption of the master plan and the subsequent rezoning of this area, council made a conscious decision to move away from the auto-dominated uses towards a more walkable urban commercial environment similar to that of a Main Street in order to achieve a mix of uses that would meet the needs of the neighborhood. In its prime, Fifth Street was known as a place where residents could do their shopping, have a meal, meet friends, socialize. Returning to that type of environment is a key goal of the plan, and the existing zoning is the correct district to facilitate that development. Rezoning the property to B5 would be detrimental to the long-term goals of the plan and the surrounding neighborhoods. Planning staff has strong concerns that rezoning this could set precedence for similar rezonings in the corridor and allow an influx of auto-dominant uses to return. Our zoning ordinance states that when a rezoning is petitioned, council shall consider whether the entire range of permitted uses in the requested classification is more appropriate than the uses in the existing classification. The requested B5 district, again, is the most intense commercial district that allows a wide range of uses, including outside storage, that are not compatible with the vision of the Fifth Street Master Plan. Other uses that would be allowed by B5 include commercial, heavy equipment rental, lumber yards, solid waste collection, and towing yards. And while these particular uses may not be suitable or practical on the subject property at this time, the property could be redeveloped into one of those uses, and the approval of the rezoning has potential to set precedence for other similar rezonings. Those would have long-lasting and detrimental impacts to the corridor, and we must consider the broader impact of deviating from the master plan, which has successfully been guiding the revitalization of this area for the last 20 years. For these reasons, the Planning Division recommends denial of the rezoning petition. Planning Commission, I just want to highlight a couple of ways how Fifth Street has come a long way and is still in a work in progress in many ways. But in recent years, we have really seen the commitment to the plan and the city's investment in this area starts payoff. As we see that progress and become more accustomed to what our modern-day Fifth Street looks like, the memories of how it used to be might start to fade. It can be easy to forget just how far this area has come. And there are dozens of examples of before-and-after visuals that I could show that would illustrate this progress and the benefits of adhering to the plan and following that vision that was established and the zoning that was adopted. For example, this is the Fifth and Federal intersection shown here in the 2000s. Pair that with the illustration from the master plan in 2006, and now in 2024, that vision is a reality. This would not have been possible without following the plan. And the private investment that followed that public investment, the former Adams Motor Company lot now completely redeveloped into an important community clinic that serves the surrounding neighborhoods. This would not be possible without following the plan. And the best example that I could think to give you today would be this corner at Fifth and Court, not just to show progress, but also to show an adaptive reuse of a very similar property, because sometimes it can be difficult to envision past the uses for what the building was built for. You know, looking past its original intent and seeing how it could be reused. Fifth and Court here in 2008, you see two vacant lots and a former automotive building. I believe the building was used for storage at the time this photo was taken, but it was an auto body shop in a former life. As you can see here, there's not a lot going on and not a lot of investment happening. In 2014, the city had completed the intersection improvements, and you can see how this starts to kind of breathe new life into the area. And today, this corner has been completely revitalized. You can see the new construction residential buildings framing this intersection, as well as the reinvestment in the adaptive reuse of the former auto shop, which is now a co-working office space. This would not be possible without following the plan. To reiterate, Fifth Street has come a long way, and as you can see from these photos, but it is still a work in progress. These examples show us why good planning and zoning have long-lasting impacts that can take, in some cases, years to come to fruition. And this progress obviously does not happen overnight, not in a month, or even a year sometimes. But when they do come to fruition, they can really transform a community through positive change to improve residents' quality of life. The bottom line is that when we follow a vision, good things happen. If we were to abandon that vision and the B4 zoning now, doing so would mean that we risk disrupting this positive momentum that we've seen in the Fifth Street Corridor, and we might not feel the negative effects of one rezoning overnight, or next week, or next month, but it is likely that it will have a long-term detrimental impact because approval would signal that the vision has been abandoned and that other similar rezonings in this area might be possible even though they would not be appropriate. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak on behalf of the petition? You could come forward one at a time unless you're speaking as for a group. And if you would please sign in.
My name is Dave Durbin.
And sign in if you don't mind, and state your name.
I find myself, after listening to the Planning Commission, the director of it, I find myself taking my notes and kind of putting them aside for a moment. Representing Mr. Kerr, who's been in that neighborhood for 45, 50 years, purchased that building. The building had always been automotive-related since 1948. And Mr. Kerr is the only person I can speak about on this. He always considered himself a great neighbor. There were a number of lots, old homes, that were falling apart. He purchased those to create buffers around that business so as not to interfere with the neighbors. The building is set up for a body shop. All the equipment, from the paint booth to ventilation system to the airlines, all the equipment is sitting there, and has been sitting there for well over 30 years. The main reason why we're actually sitting here discussing this is because a few years ago, about two and a half, three years ago, Mr. Kerr allowed a gentleman to come in and wash cars and turn it into a detail shop. He needed a place. Mr. Kerr said, sure. Unbeknownst to him, or to any of us, that eliminated the grandfather clause which that building was under that allowed automotive repairs. Didn't know anything about it. We didn't find out about it until the car wash left, and we were approached by a tenant who wanted to turn it back into a body shop, ideal situation. Set up for it. It's been that before, and that's when we were informed that, no, you cannot do that. The tenant has stayed with that building. This actually started back in February. The cleanup and the repairs that he has made to that building to bring it back to what it was 10, 15 years ago is short of amazing. Mr. Kerr, because of his age and his health, pretty much allowed some of that stuff to fall to the wayside. Knowing who that tenant is, they have done an excellent job of trying to continue to be part of that neighborhood. And sometimes I understand the vision of the city. I really do. And yet, I have to look at that portion right there and consider the fact that there are two other automotive repair shops. It's right next to the water plant, a funeral home, a church. And I just don't see that as being an interruption or something that would be detrimental to that area at this time. So, that's my...
Thank you very much. Please come forward and state your name, and if you wouldn't mind signing in for us. Thank you.
My name is Rodney Hubbard, and I'm the business owner that's right beside Mr. Kerr's building.
I'm sorry, are you speaking on behalf of...
I'm...
Are you speaking in favor?
I'm speaking in favor.
Okay. Can we make sure that... Are you ready for... You're speaking in...
I'm speaking in favor of him.
I think she thought you were associated with that. No, I'm sorry. We're hearing from people that are speaking on behalf.
On behalf of the zoning to be changed, right?
As the...
B5.
As a representative. If we're done with the behalf portion, and you're... No one's here in behalf. Okay, right. So, Madam Chair, would you move us to the speaking in behalf, just for the record? Members of the public who want to speak in favor. Sorry, now I'm confused. Okay. So, we're listening to people coming forward to speak. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. And I wasn't clear under what pretenses. Okay. So, yes, if you were here to speak in favor of this petition, I apologize for the confusion. Thank you.
Just to give you a little history, I took over 420 Monroe Street in 2015. And the only reason that I took that building over was to sell cars. The tenant prior to me, I took the building over in January 1 of 15, and the tenant that was there prior to me, his dealer license did not expire until 12 of 15. So, my landlord said, Rodney, you would have no problem selling cars there. And I said, I'm sure I shouldn't. I wouldn't because the guy that leased the building to has been selling cars there for three years. So, I come down to get my certificate to go to the dealer board, and Mr. Kevin on the zoning board said, you can't sell cars. And I go, well, why not? Because you just can't. I said, well, the code says that you can. It says permitted. He says, well, you can't sell cars. I said, well, the guy before me has a dealer license. How's he selling cars? Oh, we issued that in error. I said, for three years, you let this guy sell cars in error? Okay. I said, well, if the code says permitted, I'm a graduate from East Sea Glass High School, that means allowed to do something. Two weeks later, the code says not permitted. No, no hearing, no nothing. It just changed on its own. Apparently, he changed it. So, here I went back to City Council, fought this issue for three or four years, and City Council told me, the only way that you could sell cars is you buy Mr. Kerr's building. And I said, why is that? He said, because it's grandfathered in. So, I started to negotiate a deal with Mr. Kerr, and I couldn't come up with the down payment. All right? So, my friend Marvin, who's the tenant now, I said, Marvin, I can't buy the building, and I know you need a building. So, I'm just going to give you Mr. Kerr's number, and you work out the best deal you can. So, he entered a deal with him. I don't know the particulars of it. And I knew he was fine because they told me it was already grandfathered in, and I couldn't buy it. So, I'm still unable to sell cars. Then Marvin comes to me about a week later and says, hey, I can't do anything. I can't even park cars on the lot. I'm going, why? They said that it's not grandfathered in. And I said, wait a minute. Let me get this straight. So, you mean to tell me, there's a gentleman up the street, and I can throw a rock at his building. He comes down and get his zoning rechanged to where he can sell cars, I still can't, and it's only just for his building? I can't hire people to sell cars for me. I can't help our community by hiring 40 salespeople if I want to sell 500 cars at this place because I'm not zoned. And now you're telling me that, Marvin, you can't even repair cars at this building when it was already grandfathered in? And now you have to go through the same procedure that Mr. Dawson has to go through, which I see is certainly unfair? And then I listen to her say, oh, it's not against the change of Lynchburg. It's not in the, you know, projected change. Well, I disagree with that because you have a body shop there, a retail automotive shop there. What does that create? It creates jobs, okay, for people in that area that's in a minority range. They can walk to work, and then they have ability to start feeling better about themselves because they have a job, and they can support their family. Mr. Marcia can support his family and not be isolated to where he can't do anything. And if the city can't take advantage of people that are trying to bring business into this area, pay taxes, help a neighborhood, come out of poverty, and pretty much shut them down, that's not the type of Lynchburg that I know. That's not the type of... That's not the Lynchburg that I'm used to. I'm used to Lynchburg pro-business, pro-helping families, pro-establishment, relationships with business owners, and allowing them to expand and grow. It's not fair for one person in our zone, Mr. Dawson, to be the only one that has a B5 zoning. That's not fair for the rest of the neighborhoods that want to sell cars. That's just not fair. It makes me feel like something else is going on downtown because if a white man can do it, and a black man can't, and a Spanish person can't, why is that? Why is he the only one that has a B5? Can anyone explain that to me? Any question? I mean, can anybody explain that? Why is that? Okay. So, I am in favor of the change.
So, we'll come back to that.
Okay. And I would appreciate, just not change it for him. Change it for the whole area so people don't have to keep coming back down here, paying money to get this thing rechanged. Because I don't want to have to come down here and pay this same amount because I want the zoning changed too, so I can sell cars, so I can expand my business. What if I want to expand my business to a place where I can hire 40 or 50 people to work for me and create more revenue for Lynchburg? But I can't because you guys are holding us down. So, I'm in 100% favor for this zoning change, and I hope that you guys would have mercy on Mr. Marcia and his family to allow him to conduct his business so he can support his family, and they can move on and make a big impact in this area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I could put out a reminder, with the new council system, I don't know how to use the timer on this system. There used to be a timer up here, and it would...
I was looking for that.
And it would show us the remaining time. I'm not quite sure how to do that. However, we do need to limit individual comments to three minutes unless you are speaking as a group, in which case you would be allotted 10 minutes. And if you could indicate whether you are as an individual or as a group, that would be helpful so that we can keep the time correct. Thank you.
Okay. I got you. Just in time as rules are changing.
And you are here.
My name is Franklin Smith. I believe I'm supposed to sign in?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm speaking in behalf of Mr. Kerr and the other gentlemen and the people in the neighborhood. What we have seen here, and what letter I've gotten, is that the person who owned property within 200 feet of the subject property below, I don't think anybody have anything to say against a progression of establishment that have come here and have done all that he is doing unless you are within 200 feet. I know that some people here is near the 400 feet. So, I don't know whether that's the law, or we can do anything about that stipulation, or either they'll just have to be quiet and let the ones within 200 feet say something. I only came with three words to say, and that's concerning 30 years that I've been here. This gentleman have come here and did more than people that have been doing, have property all up and down that street for 30 years, including the government that got millions of dollars that don't do any improvement. The three words I want to use is improvement. He have done appealing, and he have made the neighborhood a profitable investment neighborhood. I could stand up here and speak for an hour for what's going on in this neighborhood and this city, and Mr. Hubbard can agree toward the blacks when they wanted your land, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You're speaking in favor of the petition. If you'll sign...
My name is Sheila Urban.
You can sign in. Thank you.
I live at 1006 Fourth Street, which I have been born and raised there, 59 years. I've been right there. I've seen that piece of property do a lot of things. I know Mr. Kerr. Mr. Kerr was a great man. He is a great man. He used to come around, talk to all of us. You know, we knew him personally because he used to come. You'd be out in the yard, he'd come by, he'd talk or whatever. Different things has been there, different people have been there. A few of them has been kind. Most of them have stayed in their business and not said anything. This young man has made himself in this little time a part of our community. He has been very kind and nice, and he sees you, he speaks, you know what I'm saying? And he's helpful. I don't see any issue with something being put there that's already been there. It's a business. It's built for business. This is somebody trying to do something in life, and us as a community need to give him a helping hand by allowing him to do so, no different than any of the rest of us who wanted to start our own business. And that building is remarkable. He has done a lot of work. He's put a lot of time in it, and it hasn't looked that good in not 40 years. So, I appreciate y'all giving me a time to speak, and I'm not saying anymore.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to...
Sure.
So, one of the questions, I just want a little clarity. I know we're talking about this piece of property. We've got a landowner. We've got a current business, and it seems like some people are speaking on behalf of a business owner that's there. And I'm trying to figure out, who are the parties at stake here?
So, Mr. Durbin spoke on behalf of the property owner.
Who is Mr. Kerr.
Who was previously Mr. Kerr.
He's my father-in-law.
Okay. I guess my question is, I'm...
He's two daughters.
Right. I'm familiar with the car wash with the gentleman there. Is this an existing... Is this person staying? Is he going to open a...
Yeah, this is Marvin. He's the business owner.
Okay. So, there's a new business owner in there. Okay. I just was confused because I know the car wash, but I didn't know, there's nothing about the new business owner. So, when I hear people speak, I'm not sure who they're talking about. That's why.
And Mr. Hubbard, what is your role in this?
He's a next-door neighbor.
He's a neighbor.
Next-door, across, yeah.
If we could continue on with the public hearing, I don't want to get too mixed up in our procedure here, and we can answer all the questions at the end.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? The comment that you sent us earlier today was that, I read it, but was that, that was in opposition? Okay. It was four. So, should we read that?
It doesn't have to be read into the public record. It is just by them sending it in, but they essentially, a neighbor said that they see no issue as long as the noise is kept to a reasonable level.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this petition? Could you please come forward? State your name and sign in. Thank you.
Hunter Dawson. Good to go?
Yep.
You have three minutes?
Yes.
I'd like to follow procedure, sorry. And thank you for having me. As they brought me up, I was here, I've been here before on a different matter. But really, I'm a Liberty University Law grad, so I have nothing to lie to you about. I have a great pedigree here. I'm nothing special, just a humble man, but I know the truth because I do know these people. And what they're giving you is smoke and mirrors because the property, 1212 Park Avenue, that I stood before you back in December about, it's a beautiful property now. This property in hand, but the tenant at the time was Marvin, the guy you see sitting here. They've been talking about, and it was a junkyard. I don't know if you remember it, but the kudzu was all over the fences. There was probably 50 cars junk tore all apart out in the lot, all over the lot. It was an utter mess. So, what he did was, when we bought it, we told him, so he couldn't stay because he didn't have a lease, and we didn't want a junkyard at our facility. So, he went down the street to 1811 Memorial Avenue. Jacob Christian is the owner of that. That's right down the street, less than a quarter of a mile. There, he never paid his rent on time. He didn't pay the late fees on time. He was evicted from the property. He owes Jacob about $7,000 of money right now, and they have another hearing on May the 5th in the Lynchburg City Courts, and he's attaching his property. When he left there, he left Jacob high and dry, and he came to the Kerr's singing, woe is me, I just want to provide for my family. It's just not true. He goes on the weekends. He spends three or four grand gambling on soccer games. He travels all over the place. He doesn't manage his money appropriately, and immediately... travels all over the place, he doesn't manage his money appropriately, and immediately brought over fifteen junk cars to their property. The planning commission, I don't know why they didn't show you, maybe they didn't deem it appropriate, but they have emails from me of the property, pictures of all those cars scattered across the property, junked out, and that's what it will look like if you approve this. So when he got with the Currs, the Currs are in Forests, is what I understand, so they're not even in the city. This property, I have much respect for Mr. Kerr, I don't know the man, but I know he hasn't been down here for some time. They took their business, I believe they're in Bedford County, out in Forests, right off Cotton Town Road. So they have really no care for this place and it was dilapidated. I even made them full cash offer of a hundred and fifty thousand for the property to use it for detailing services, for what it's owned for. But they had an opportunity to get twenty-five thousand dollars cash down from the tenant and put him on a lease to own, and we all know the risk of that, and they could get seventy-five thousand plus in interest. So they made a business decision, not for the city, but for their own coin, their own purse for themselves, when they're giving all their sales tax and business to Bedford County and not to Lynchburg City. So, I mean, for what it is, that's what I have to say. I think I'm running out of time, but Mr. Hubbard, since he brought me up, we are two blocks up, we're totally not on the main drag of Fifth Street. We are, you know, his property, if you look at the size of it, I don't know how you could employ forty people. And the tenant here, he doesn't have a business license. I would like for you to pull his tax records and see if he's even paid you a dime in taxes since he's been here. The reality is, the people standing before you today, he does work for them on their insurance claims. The insurance company paid them about eight thousand and they'll pocket the money and pay him twelve hundred to fix the car. But I just want you to know. I'll be back for the city council, but thank you.
We've got to cut it off.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there somebody else here that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up.
Good afternoon. I'm David Newmeyer. I'm here on behalf of two organizations, the Fifth Street Community Development Corporation and the Legacy Museum of African American History. And I will sign it. I am a board member for the Fifth Street CDC and have been so for about six years. I was very involved in the project to create and install the statue of T.D. Thornhill that's now in the Rotary. I'm also been a board member of the Legacy Museum for four years now. I'm currently the board president. And both organizations are strongly in favor of the master plan that the city has adopted for the Fifth Street Corridor in terms of making small business friendly, walkable, useful for people who live in the neighborhood and for visitors. And we're opposed to the requested zoning change. And we already have a auto body shop on the block, as we know, from Mr. Hubbard. On about any given day, there are at least a dozen cars parked on the same block between Hubbard and the Legacy Museum. Legacy Museum owns the three adjoining properties next to the proposed new auto body shop. We have the museum that's at the top of the hill at the corner of Fourth Street. And on the downhill side, right next to the proposed new body shop, is our Activity Center, which is particularly used by kids and families. During the months of June and July, we're doing a joint project with the Legacy Museum about the Tuskegee Airmen. Every Thursday, we will have an activity. We will switch back and forth of venue between Amazement Square and the Legacy Museum and our Activity Center. We're expecting fifty to a hundred kids to attend each of those. So we have parking problems right now. I stopped by this afternoon to see the parking situation. There were a dozen cars on the street which were not ours, and there were two parked directly in front of the Activity Center. So we foresee this, the parking competition getting worse as well as the number of cars just crowding the street waiting for bodywork not being conducive to an environment for families and kids to come to our museum and to our Activity Center. So those are my comments, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of the petition? Would the presenters like to offer, do we do this, a rebuttal? Just Mr. Durbin? Would you like to offer a rebuttal to the opposition? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Then at this point, the public hearing is closed and commissioners can ask their questions to the city staff or to the petitioner.
I have a quick question for city staff related to the Fifth Street Corridor master plan. Can you just give me a fifty thousand foot walkthrough of how that plan was crafted and adopted? Fifty thousand feet. It involved the community, I'm assuming?
Yes. The public input is described in the plan. I can, while planning commission is discussing, I could pull up the specifics of whether it was survey or workshops or that sort of thing.
I guess I just want to start from my thinking. Start there.
I'm sorry, what was your question again?
My question is that, well, it's more of a clarifying question. The Fifth Street Corridor master plan, which was adopted in two thousand and six, included the community in terms of its input and creation. So I'm just trying to understand if I've got that right.
I think all our plans involve community. I just make one comment. And I really appreciate Mr. Hubbard's comments. I'm having a small business in town. You know, this body was not in support of the change on Park Avenue. And so these are the kind of questions that come up at city council, as you all know. We're really looking at the way the land is used and we're guided by those earlier decisions that council made with the input of the community in a master plan. And that's what we're here to do, is to look at how the land is used. And I think, you know, I just want to be really careful that folks realize that we're not here to shut businesses down or move out. We're actually focusing on that use. And then our input is taken by city council. They're the ones who make the decisions, not us. We didn't make a decision in support of a car lot. And we haven't. And it would not, the reason these things come up to us is because they are not conforming with plans that were made back in oh six or oh seven. And so I think that's, you know, one of the things that, you know, I want to clarify personally, that's what I make my judgments on, is the comprehensive plan the city wrote out long before I came on planning commission. So I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate that.
Can I have your license? Can I ask a question?
Sure. If you could come up front, please, and that way we can hear you. Thank you.
I believe I seen at the end that already, the planning commission have already denied this, haven't they?
That is planning staff's recommendation.
Pardon me?
That is the planning staff's recommendation to deny this petition. If planning commission ultimately decides to recommend approval, that will be reflected in the report.
So they have already...
No. Staff has recommended denial.
The staff?
Planning commission has now made a decision. They will be voting on that today.
Okay, what staff? You said a staff?
City planning staff.
City planning staff?
The city planning.
Oh, okay.
To the city council, and then the city council ultimately votes for it.
So who is with you on the staff? How many of you are on the staff?
Currently, we have two staff members. We also consult our city's technical review committee. We have two vacancies in our office right now.
Two people. Two people make the decision. Okay.
But you framed your decision based on comprehensive plans and the things that we make our decisions on, right?
Yes, that's correct. It's based on the citywide comprehensive plan, the future land use map within the plan. And then if we have a small area plan or a specific corridor plan, like we do in this, all those things layered together, it's not just one or two people, you know, making a decision. We're taking all of these things into consideration as well as, you know, past zoning recommendations, neighborhood context, all these things.
It seemed like kind of a rabbit fell at the moment. I guess it's kind of germane, but it came up that a business license was issued in error. What would be the normal procedure if a license is issued in violation of zoning and it's discovered at some later date? I mean...
I can't speak to the specifics. I'm not sure what Mr...
Did you buy the building? Are you leasing the building that you're in? The reason I'm asking is, was that a contingency of...
So the zoning administrator is here and has had conversations with Mr. Hubbard in the past. I'm not sure what error he is referring to, and I don't know if Kevin has more insight.
I'd rather not spend too much time on what occurred with Mr. Hubbard because that's not why y'all are here today. State code allows for if something was made in error, the city has sixty days to sort of take that decision back if it was made in error. So that ability is there in state code to retract that. But like I said, I'd rather not get into too many details. There's a lot of things complicated and moving parts that took place in Mr. Hubbard's instance.
Yeah. Maybe better to air that dirty laundry quickly and dispense with it. The allegation was that there's some bias being shown here. And either there was or there wasn't.
And Mr. Hubbard has brought that, I mean, he's brought it up with me before in the past, and he's brought it up with city council at the time that that occurred, back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen-ish, and was heard by council.
Thank you.
To follow up on his comment about why is Mr. Dawson allowed to do something that other people are not? Because Mr. Dawson pursued the rezoning, which as you'll remember, we recommended denial of that one as well. So there's not bias coming from staff. I don't want to get off topic, but we have been consistent with this.
So as far as when the grandfathered situation goes away, that happens when you change ownership? Or when, tell me when that happens?
When the use stops for two years.
Okay. And when did the auto shop stop?
So at some point, they did not, where they were not able to provide documentation that it had been done within the last two years. So we know it was longer than two years.
Do you want to come up front? Sorry, I hate to make you come up front. It's just easier for us to hear and it's being recorded, so.
I can answer that. Mr. Kerr was doing tire work and working on automobiles up until three years ago. And at that time, because of health issues, because of health issues, he was thinking about maybe trying to do something different. Well, we were, yes, we are in Bedford, yeah, we live in Bedford County, that's true. That's true. We also have businesses in the city. But that's, other than that, other than that. But anyway, at the end of the day, a gentleman approached Mr. Kerr and said, hey, I want to start a car wash and detail cars. And he thought, well, this would be a great opportunity to just transition. Somebody needed a building, he was going to go ahead and, you know, let them do that. Not knowing that that would eliminate that grandfather, that grandfathering of the auto repair business. If we had been aware of it, and I'm not saying that that's anybody's fault and maybe ignorance on our part.
When was it grandfathered? When was it grandfathered in? When did that start?
It was grandfathered in when they switched the zoning to, from B six to B four, I understand.
Which was roughly?
It was grandfathered when it was switched from B five to B six.
Two thousand six.
So it was two thousand...
So it wasn't that long ago?
It was two thousand seven.
We're not talking about the seventies.
But the, but so up until three years ago, Mr. Kerr was selling tires?
He was down there.
Okay.
He was servicing cars.
And to be clear, car wash and car and auto shop are not included in the same zoning? It's a different use.
It's a different use.
So when they...
Grandfathers for a specific function until...
Yes, correct.
Until it stops.
Right. So when they started using the car wash, or the building for only car wash, and didn't use it for auto body after that, the auto body non-conforming status lapsed. So they no longer have the grand...
There was a car wash there the whole time?
They have, they have non-conforming status for the car wash.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
They do still?
Say it again.
Yes, for the car wash, they have non-conforming status or grandfathering for the car wash.
So they want to do the car wash?
Which they are doing now. That is happening in the building now, to my understanding.
Did Mr. Kerr open another similar type business in Bedford County?
He's always, he's had one there since nineteen eighty-eight.
Is it still operating?
Yes, it is.
So why, why did he, I'm sorry, go.
We actually purchased that business from him.
So you mentioned that he closed the city one, the Fifth Street one down because of health issues? Did the other one close too and reopen, or did just this one close?
We, prior to his health issues, we had already purchased that business from him. He still owns Pinkland Marathon.
So these continued to operate even though the health issues were...
We're operating it on his, for him.
Okay, so this was the only one that closed down? Of the ones that are owned?
He chose to leave. And when his health started to fail, we told him we would continue operating the Boone's Grove location for him, so he didn't have to worry about that.
Okay, so there are numerous businesses owned by Mr. Kerr and yourself and family, but this particular one was the only one that was shut down? Okay.
I'm next door and this business been there for thirty years. I've been there thirty years and it's been open for thirty years until Mr. Kerr got sick and there was a body shop, auto place, everything that he wanted to do to an automobile for thirty years.
He's a very good man. Mr. Kerr is a very good man. He will hurt nobody. He deserved to keep this place.
Okay, so... Planning commission, I just want to reiterate the issue at hand, which is not whether or not, or when the grandfathering stopped. The point is, it is no longer non-conforming. The use is not allowed. The question before you today is, will you recommend or deny a rezoning to go back to the B five zoning?
Were there any proffers discussed? You know, I think one of the questions was, well, this might end up becoming a junkyard. There's a lot of things under B five this could be that I would never support. So I'm curious as to whether there were proffers made specifically for that one business? Because you can't do that, correct? You could come through with a proffer and say, I'm only going to operate this kind of business?
The Durbins and Mr. Kerr do have that option to submit proffers. They did not mention any to us. I will say that even with the, if they had, I'm not sure it would have changed staff... I will say that even with the, if they had, I'm not sure it would have changed staff's recommendation because of B5 in any form is not appropriate for this district. And that's just...
Rachel, did, did you say that the use, that the guy who's in there now is non-conforming? So does that mean he's...
He is, he has a non-conforming status for the car wash, the detailing.
Does that mean he's illegal, or he's, he's...
Non-conforming means you do not conform to the zoning, but you are still legally operating.
Okay, so he can stay?
As, as a car wash. He wants to do car wash and body work.
So how did that come about? Does he have a business license, or does he just operate?
There is no business license on record for the property. It, you know, I spoke to the commissioner's office about why that might be. It may be because if he falls below the $150,000 threshold, council made the decision, oh, can't recall when, but a while back, that they would not require business license, business licenses for those making under $150,000.
Sure.
So it could be that.
I know this may appear, some of these may appear as rabbit trails, trying to understand the grandfathering issue, and whether there's some other businesses that existed at the same time that remained open, or whether they closed at the same time due to the same reason. But they're all kind of getting at the crux of the issue here. This, this building and this property had a, had a mandate to operate under a grandfathering clause, which, if you're in business, they just expire when the business stops. So at, at some point, this business ceased functioning as to what it was. And whether it was an oversight, or whether it was just a strategic decision by Mr. Kerr, or wherever to close this one down because of its location, and keep the other remaining businesses open, because maybe they were more profitable, is another question. So again, while they may seem distracting, they actually do have a goal in mind, just to help, I guess, help us understand whether an exception needs to be made in this case, or whether the city's plan is more consistent with what this needs to be going forward.
I think that, I also think that brings up, you know, we have some other vacant buildings there. Across the street is Mr. Kerr's old garage that is empty. And, and I think as a Planning Commission, we do set precedent. We have voted against things, and they still pass, but it doesn't mean that we, we, we decide to just say, well, we're not going to do this. I think we're looking at an area where there's quite a few buildings, and I would support Mr. Hubbard's business, and I've supported Shenandoah Tire down the street. But at the same time, I don't know if I can support just starting to give carte blanche to this B5 door, because we, once we set that precedent, and once we set it for ourselves, we have to keep it. Now, what City Council does, that's them, not us, but...
I feel like we've been discussing this topic as if we were City Council.
We're not.
And that's not our job. Our purview is, is this an appropriate petition for this zoning and the land use plan and the master plan? We make some recommendations that we may not personally like, but that's our purview. So I think we need to rein it in and focus on that. And, and that's the question before, is not the other topics that have been raised.
I, I agree, but I do think this grandfathered issue is, comes up all the time, you know, especially when, when we, as a community, continue to make a future plan, and we continue to change the future, you know, the future land map, like, like we're doing now. You know, we're, we're getting everybody's input, and we're going to make recommendations for a, a new future land use map based on what, you know, what, what our goals and visions are. So I, I just want to understand this grandfathered issue a little bit better, and, and I don't mean to, to, I, I just wonder, and, and I don't understand it, but if you, if you have a, a car dealership or a car, auto repair shop and a car wash, like, they're both there, and, you know, the zoning has changed, but they're grandfathered in, they're able to keep their business, like some of the others have kept their businesses. So the, the shop shuts down, but the car wash stays open, I, I'm, you know, it seems like a little bit of a gray area as far as the, the, the whole purpose of, once you change your use, you can't go back. But, because it's still, it's still a car wash.
But we actually had that exact same question on Park Avenue, and we declined to support that project. And we didn't support the grandfathering notion, that where there are already car things there. We supported the comprehensive plan, the master plan that was set up there, and, and that's what I feel like, that's what we should be looking at, is what is the larger plan, rather than that business.
In this case, we've got a business operating that has permitted a secondary business without a license to operate on the property.
Right, and they can stay.
Yeah. So as long as it continued to operate as a car dealership, or a car repair shop, whatever it was, it operated under the grandfathering clause. Once it stopped operating, it's that, the grandfather expired. It cannot go back to that unless they come, appeared before council and get it approved. The business that was operating at the convenience of the owner there is not part of that business, so it's just operating. It's just there. So it's not grandfathered in, it's not anything, it's just operating.
It's not illegal, though.
Well, not necessarily.
It's a legal, legal non-conforming, which, which...
It's a functioning non-conforming.
In my mind is, is like if, you know, even if we, we don't support this, or if we do, either way, that car wash can stay, that detail shop can stay. And, and we're not deciding that. We're deciding on a, a major change to the...
Zoning.
Yeah, to the zoning.
Another question.
And, yeah, and that's...
Okay.
When, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a comment. I've, I've lived on, in the Fifth Street neighborhood for 40 years. I just moved away from it three years ago, but I've walked every inch of it many, many times, and that, that corner is a major corner. I mean, it's a major intersection where Park Avenue comes in. The Francis Flowers, I guess, is still there. It's about the only thing that's still operating on that corner, as far as I know, if, if it is still working. But that could, those pictures you showed of before and after were beautiful. I mean, I would never have imagined those things that happened on the corner of Fifth and Court Street. And all three of those, well, all four of those buildings have, have been renovated now, at least three of them. But I see lots of uses for this one at, at Fifth and Monroe. It could, I mean, it could be a, it could be a restaurant, it's quite, it could be a very attractive building as a restaurant, or a daycare center, or, you know, all kinds of conforming businesses that are neighborhood businesses, that people would want to come to and would employ a lot of people. I mean, there, it's not like the building can never be used again, but there are plenty of conforming uses that could go in there. And I would vote to deny the petition to change it to, to B5, because there are plenty of other good things, better things, that would help the community, or that conformed to the plan. I mean, better in my opinion, but also in the opinion of the plan that we've approved years ago.
Rachel, are there, are there more? I know that we, the city spent a lot of money on the circle. You know, are there plans to go over the hill and back down? Is that, do you know what the timeframe is on that?
I believe that's in design now. I don't think it will have as many historic streetscape features, budgetary constraints at this point. But yes, that section beyond the hill will be repaved and sidewalks repoured. The retaining walls, the retaining walls that are a little sloping, those will be repaired, that sort of thing.
And that's all part of that plan?
Yes.
Part of that master plan from '07?
The streetscape improvements that, that we have now are a result of the recommendations of the plan and implementation of the plan.
I, I, I hear you guys, and I, and I understand and agree. I agree with that. I mean, I, I know that there could be some beautiful things. There have been beautiful things built, and there could be some great things in place of what's there. It just takes a lot of money, a lot of, you know, investors, and my one, my one hesitation is that, that, you know, the people that live around it, that want to be able to use it for a business, you know, don't have that kind of money to turn it into a restaurant or completely renovate the inside to do, to have something wonderful there. I mean, it just, there's no money. I mean, so, so that's my heart speaking there. But, but I, I understand is, when you're looking at the, at the, at the zoning and, and the future land use map, I mean, my Planning Commission hat says something different, so I, I struggle with this.
I'd like to say something if I may, if I have to go. I agree with this lady that just finished speaking, like, that people not having the money to do things. And look at what he have done, probably a little no money compared to what the city have, government money. Look at what he have done. It's amazing, all around the place. He have beautified the place.
He has used people money.
From day to night, in that location right there. Everybody's looking at it and talking about it now. Probably everybody want it now. Look at it. It's amazing, isn't it?
It does look amazing.
Fantastic, you might say. They really do want it, don't they?
Are we in order?
Here's a gentleman right here, and, here's a gentleman right here, and testing me by buying my property.
He was silent, he got the...
Let's try not to.
The public hearing, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
All right. So...
I would suggest we record.
Okay.
Has he seconded that motion?
I haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, I thought you, okay.
I will make a motion to recommend denial to City Council of this petition.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor of denial.
Deny it. All opposed? And I'm, I'm going to abstain.
Did you just, did you second and then abstain?
No.
No, I didn't second. I asked if there was a...
Chuck seconded.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I wasn't looking. Okay, so that was 501 abstention?
Yes.
Right. I believe to give an abstention, you're, you're supposed to name a...
A reason.
Valid reason, like if you have a conflict of interest.
Okay, I will change, change it to, I guess I'll, I'll change it in favor. I'll change it to be in favor.
Okay.
Of doing which, what, how did you vote?
In favor of the motion.
Of the motion, not the petition.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to be detail-oriented.
All right, the motion carries, so you guys will head over to City Council, and they will make the official ruling. Wish you luck. Is there any other new business? Old business?
Should be June 12th, and I do expect you to have a meeting.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.